Second meeting for September 5th. No, that's incorrect, for September 19th.
Yeah, probably right.
I'm going back in time.
Go back to the 19th.
Thank you. All three subordinates present. The town administrator is present. The corner secretary is present. And Mr. Leo Martell is recording for the benefit of those citizens who cannot attend. In fact, illegal. It's good to have you back. Again, this is second week back, but it's good to have you back.
Yep, I'm just getting in a roll.
It's okay. Okay, we have a subminister from last, from September, correct? They were amended, so they've been amended.
I'll make a motion for the September 5th meeting minutes as amended.
So, any discussion on them, gentlemen?
Nope.
Overall, they were great.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
See if it brings. I'll put my A1 days on.
Right off, I'm gonna open up the public comment. And we have a great, great audience tonight.
I'm first.
You have a first, Neil, and the last.
Thanks.
I'll close public comment. And, Lee, do you have some checks for us?
I do.
Let's, uh...
Don Larson does an awesome job in, um, getting donations for his cause.
So, we have two for the Rees-Acros Dunbar.
Yep.
And so, a total of, uh, four hundred and... Ten dollars.
Ten dollars.
We have to do them separately?
Yes. I'll just start with you.
I'll do the first one, Bob, and then the second one?
Sure.
I'll make a motion per RSA 31:95-B, form the normal three paragraph B, to accept donations in the amount of $375 for Rees-Acros Dunbar from the Riverstone Company.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you have the check, you said, for sure. Okay. And Bob, you have the second one?
Yeah, motion to accept, uh, $35 for RSA, uh, 31:95-B, three parentheses B, from, for Rees-Acros Dunbar from Peter Weeks.
I'll second that.
Did you see the amount, Bob?
He did, yeah.
Yeah, $35.
All right, aye. All in favor, yes, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we have some money for the, uh, Rees-Acros Dunbar. Again, uh, he's a master of, uh, collecting money.
One thing I didn't say on that first one, it looks like it's an employee match donation on behalf of Elizabeth Furnia?
Ferdina.
Ferdina.
Yeah.
Probably we should note that for the record.
Okay, very good. Okay. And let's move right down the agenda. We have a tax document here, gentlemen. Maybe I have it with me, it's a 535.
It's actually the, uh...
434, too, we need two.
Well, we can do the 535 first because it, all that requires is the Board of Selecting to sign. This is our financial report that's required of Department of Revenue to set the tax rate. They've completed the form and have already uploaded the document to the DRA, uh, but it requires a board signature on the cover page. So, I just have some supporting documents from that, and that's all, um...
Anything we shouldn't, uh, any highlights we should be fully aware of?
If you look at that page that I flagged right there, the one I flagged, oh, no, signature, I think, I wanna say it's page, uh, let me find it for you real quick.
Just, just for the benefit of the board.
Okay. One thing I did notice that on page, uh, seven of eight, the balance sheet, last year, 2017, ending, we had $835,906, of which, um, $185,000 was earmarked for liabilities, which could be, uh, appeals, warrants that haven't lapsed. So, the unassigned fund balance that we had in 2017 was $650,000. That was money that the, the board could tap into if they needed to use some money towards, um, um, future operating budget and whatnot. In 2017, December, we had, um, a total of $826,401. But of that, the assigned fund balance, which is earmarked for, um, liabilities, dropped to $77,910. And we've actually increased the unassigned fund balance to $748,491, which is almost just under $100,000. And that is money that's not earmarked for anything. Totals of, of the fund is almost within $10,000 on each other, but you actually have more money that you can play with because what's earmarked for liabilities is dropped from 185 to 77. So, that's, uh, a positive, and I'm sure that the auditor will point that out in our exit comments.
You said 2017, 2017, you meant 2019.
No, this is all, all based on, uh, the audit for 2018.
Right, right, okay.
So, we, the first column that I, I spoke of was in 2017.
Right.
Uh, the new, uh, ending balance is December of 2018.
Okay, I, I thought you reversed the two.
No, we don't have our, um...
No, but the thing is, uh, these are lower amount was for, is most recent.
Most recent, but we have more unassigned fund balance
Correct.
to, to work with. That's increased $100,000.
Okay.
That's something.
And we're gonna have a non-public, and I talk about some other issues?
Yeah.
Potential liabilities?
Yeah.
Okay.
You said that was on seven, eight?
Seven, eight, is what I said.
Seven, eight, I think.
Yeah, so that was, that second to the, to the bottom line is money that's in our fu- fund surplus, but we, it's earmarked for something. Whereas now, that number's decreased by a hundred.
Things at which we commit for many year, for like five years or whatever.
Correct, multiple year warrants and whatnot, yeah.
Which I could say the state, as I recall, state actually includes it into our...
They do, in their percentage of...
Which one was that, the 535?
That's the 535.
You know 535 says Melanson Health on here, right?
No, it's Melanson Heath.
Heath?
Yeah, that's, that's what they are, yeah.
That's it, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, let's talk about the 434.
Okay, so I gave, I provided you with, um, a spreadsheet. This is the same report that you looked at in, in a smaller format. I've added some notes, um, the, this is required that you review this, uh, prior to ta- setting your tax rate because if you would see some sort of, um, decrease or increase of large numbers, you could then adjust it when you go to set your tax rate. So, um, I'm gonna start with the first page, um, land use change tax. We had, uh, the board had decided to reduce that based on future pending history that we felt were gonna decrease. Current year-to-date, we are at $19,790, which is a deficiency of $20,210. But we still have one pending $6,450. So, we're currently at 50%. We do have one that's pending to be transferred.
Yeah, I think a few more lots are gonna come up on that.
Yeah, there's a few. I don't know if those are in current use.
I don't know either.
I don't believe they are. Um, the next item that I highlighted is other taxes, payment in lieu of taxes. Um, there's a description within the tax collector's collections that's similar to what payment in lieu of taxes, which means flood control money. So, the DRA has moved that onto 3357. So, you can see I had budgeted for $3,000 with the anticipation that we would be getting $3,500 from flood control. There's actually another account that's kinda called the same. So, it looks like it's deficient. So, next year, I will reduce that line for, um, projected revenues. The next group is the 3190 category, interest on taxes and other taxes. Um, that entire group gets, uh, added together. We're looking at, um, a total budget of $26,000. We're at $12,717. Uh, we still have four months of outstanding, uh, interest and other costs. We probably will come in a little shy, but it's hard to tell.
Revenues.
Revenues, yeah. Uh, next category, I'm gonna jump right to the 3220, which is all the vehicle registrations. Those, we lump and, uh, a budget in one account, and then the system breaks it out separately. So, we had budgeted $650,000. We came in, we're currently at $539,689. That's through August. I have not exported September through December. So, outstanding balance is $110,311. Um, vehicle permits for four months average, that would bring us in at $27,648 to meet that $110,000. Last year, September through December, we collected $223, or a full month average of $55,000. So, I don't believe that there will be any issue with us meeting that budget. Building permits, uh, we have had a good year for building. We only have, um, 7.9% outstanding to collect for the next three and a half months. Other license, the category 3290. Again, that number gets totaled into one account for $10,000. So, if you go down to the bottom of that total group, we've actually collect, uh, budget was $10,000. We collected $11,997. So, we have exceeded, uh, anticipated. Uh, next group to jump to is highway block grants. Um, every year, for the last few years, we've, uh, budgeted conservatively at $90,000. We've collected three of our four payments for this calendar year. Uh, DOT works from July to June, so their outstanding second quarter is scheduled for $31,792. That is a committed number. So, our new ending balance will get adjusted at tax rate setting to $104,282, rather than the $90,000.
Oh, $14,000.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, uh, moving down to the PLT. Again, I noted up above, that's where it got entered into the system. We had no budget there. It was included up above, but next year, I will locate it within the system in the proper line. So, that's what we received for, uh, payment in lieu of taxes for the federal forest.
So, it's, it's, there's $70,000 split between the two lines?
So, the, that's a flood control, the other ones are federal.
Okay, so they're, they're separate payments?
But, right, and, but the total, when I spoke to Natalie Duffy earlier this week to review our MS-1 totals, which are new values?
Right.
She did have that new number, and she said she would be adjusting that for the tax rate setting, and the new number will be $72,346.
And we only budgeted $77?
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, then the next group is rooms and meals. I spoke to Michelle from Department of Revenue today. She has not yet received that number, but she said it was okay to estimate and that it would get adjusted at the tax rate setting. The next group...
What, you, your number is very low, uh...
$135. The prior year, we took in $144.
Okay.
So, I don't know, that goes up and down with meals and rooms, and I'm not... It's been a conservative budget that I think the board agreed with me when we set that number.
We have to get, we have to just pray for a good leap, leap per season.
Yeah, true. All right, so then move on to the next category, 3401, which is income from other departments. We have a total of $60,000 for the two accounts, which includes $30,000 for recycling and $30,000 from income, different types of income. And we're currently at $52,257, which is $7,742. We still have
Three months.
three and a half months remaining. So, I think that we probably find that we meet that category as well. Interest on deposits, as you know, the Treasury's been trying to invest our, um, find our, our money a little bit wiser, and we currently have, um, received an excess of $3,000 in our interest on deposits.
Where's, I'm sorry, I see, I got it.
I added this $1,000, the budget $1,000 came in at four.
Okay.
And then, at the bottom, as you can see, the column that's highlighted, $758,521 is what we have as of today. Uh, what is not included in there is four months of town clerk revenue, four months of tax collector revenue, kibble pond rent for three months, highway block rent for the last payment of this calendar year, rooms and meals, and on the next page, one outstanding, uh, current use penalty. So, that will bring our new total of, of revenue to $1,135,022. Our estimated revenue for the budget, when we presented it to the voters, was $1,129,314. So, we have an excess of $5,708. And that doesn't include any of the other incidentals that we would collect within three and a half months. So, I think we're...
Pretty spot on.
I think we're really good. It's, um, a conservative budget, um, if any excess always increases our surplus. Uh, the only thing that is required of the board tonight in order for me to set the tax rate is to discuss the overlay. And as, um, I've explained to you in the past, that the overlay is a dollar amount that's raised from taxes over and above the operating budget. And the reason for that is if we have abatements, they can't exceed more than a half a percent of the total, um, projected budget. So, they allow you to collect additional money to set aside. So, when you have abatements that are filed, um, things that typically trigger additional abatements might be a reval year, we're coming up to a reval year, uh, a spike in tax increase, which is exactly what's gonna happen in 2019. So, um, I'm gonna ask the board, based on a meeting that I had with the Board of Assessors, that we estimate, um, a number for overlay that's been more than we typically do. Um, our auditor did say that we have $57,000 in this, um, liability account for pending, um...
Liabilities.
My, um, abatements. But we have outstanding appeals from 2014 to 2019. So, it's been recommended that we increase that number a little bit more aggressively. And if, in fact, things get settled and we don't use it, then it just lapses into the general fund surplus.
What, uh, rate was set last year?
I believe it was at... We didn't want to bring that up, man, we didn't...
This is an issue, one of the issue probably discussing on Monday tonight. This involves lawsuit.
Well, you can, yeah, you can wait on your decision, you can make that act. Okay, so, uh, last year, we put in...
I'd like to defer any decision to the non-pubics after we discuss, uh, the, uh, issues in non-public. So, it'll bring everyone up to speed.
I forgot it's on this page, and I put the overlay. Overlay, $10,006, uh, we must've really dropped it. Overlay actually used was $10,863, but that's 2017. I think we bumped it out, up to like 15 or 20 this calendar year. And the audit that's just been completed is fiscal year ending 2017. So, some of that $10,000 is part of what the auditor says we currently have, which is the $58,000. Any questions on the revenue?
How much, um, just on liability, uh, we have $58,000, as, I thought it was $70, was it? I, I'll just, one more time.
There's an email in there from Melanson Heath.
Okay.
He confirmed that any, um, overlay that's not used for that immediate calendar year for prior year's abatements
Right.
lapses to the general, to the surplus. But, in this case here, we still have utility appeals pending. So, we have appeals pending from 2014 through 2019. So, there's quite a few years there for us to have to deal with.
So, what you're suggesting on this overlay amount?
I'm thinking in the range between $75,000 and $100,000.
I would defer that to a non-public.
Okay.
Because I don't want, um, I don't, the opposing parties don't have to know the town finances at this point.
Yeah.
In what we're planning. So, I'd like to hold that question to a non-public.
All right.
Bob, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, so, we, we, what do you need from us on this now?
Uh, if you agree with the numbers that we have, I'll submit the numbers that we currently have for the actual budget.
But we have to decide on overlay before we...
Before the end of tonight.
Okay, so we defer this before, before, we'll vote on this later on tonight.
Okay.
Okay, gentlemen, are you happy with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Going down the roster, John Stevens, Home and Old Lundy, Summarize My Own Expenses.
They're actually currently in a meeting right now
Okay.
to, um, summarize the, um, event and how it went, and what they collected, and what they have remaining. And, um, I believe when I ran the report between fee, fees that they collected for table fees, it's like $435, $425, plus they have about $700 in the operating budget. And they would like to be proactive in ordering things that they think will help make future old home days work a lot smoother. For starters, they wanna get, um, a postcard, um, out earlier than later to remind people that this is the date of our old home day, save the date. Um, they, um, want to re, uh, purchase new volunteer t-shirts. I'm not sure exactly how much those will cost, but, um, I know that there were just a few of us that had the t-shirts on, and I had, without knowing, people come to me to say, "Hey, where can I find this?" or "Where do I need to set up?" So, they do work, um, they just have, over the years, kind of dwindled, or they're too small, and so they're probably going to invest in that a little bit. And there's a few other items, um, they actually want to replace a broken blade of our lawn care person because he ran over one of the spikes from the tent and damaged one of his blades. So, it's a hundred dollar expense, but I think they realize that he tries to do a good job, and it's not his job to pick up everything, but he happened to miss it and caught it because it was...
So, that's, that's all to be, we'll, we'll just defer that for now, and a review of that for now, okay?
I think they're all, overall, they're, um, they have the authority to spend that money. They're working within their budget, and they're doing a great job.
Have to be cussed it up a little bit, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll go, I'll start the mailbox, and so we can keep the meeting moving. I got a safety grant, again, the police department safety grant. I thought, I thought we signed this one already, is this another one?
Yeah, it's a, I think it's a renewal or an extension of that one. They usually expire in September, so that's probably what we have here is a renewal of this...
It's a highway safety grant, uh, request, and, uh, from which one? Bishop Christmas here to explain it.
It's a box, there's a box with the summary total on it, I think.
Is it, okay? Fine print, fine print, I love it. Fine print, fine print. Dave, this is the type of print you love.
Mm.
All right, Operation Safe Commute Enforcement, high visibility mobilization allows the state the opportunity to provide coordinated highway safety during, specifically, some times of the f- fiscal year. Media events occur, and... They're gonna, it's basically patrol dates, the, uh, the rides that will get pulled over. These are less, uh, just, uh, safety programs have participated in. And New Hampshire Click Enforcement patrols, enforcing the child restraint law. So, those are the three things are applying. Operation Safe Commute Enforcement, they have the specific dates, joining the New Hampshire, uh, Child Restraint Law, and a sober event. And that, uh, sober event is Friday, November 13th, 2019, to January and August 2020 through September 2020. So, this is, uh, just, they wanna play in these safety programs and get some dollars for it. The grain limitation's only $28, $2862. I have no, we have consensus here, just assign it?
Bob, you?
Yeah, okay. Three signatures. Have to give the, uh, Assistant Chief a hard time.
We all go to sign, right?
Yes.
You're on camera, and if he hears that, he's gonna want to raise.
There are other pages to sign as well, don't forget. I think you flagged them.
Authorized contract signature, I couldn't put the town management.
I, I do sign them off, and I don't know what the requirements are, but those three spots would be the selectmen.
Okay, I'm gonna let you sign as the, uh, the one, the other one to receive, uh... All right. Just me, Dave, just you and the rest?
Yeah.
No, the other pages have three spots.
There was one, David, you wiped out that.
It says eight, though, but... Maybe time. I need the rest.
That's the three, you see?
The three on the bottom, right here?
Yeah.
Is initials.
I'm gonna go get some paper, one.
Initials, babe, I see, I like initials. These are just one signature.
Oh, just the initials, huh?
Yeah, initials, a lot of what I think remain.
Is this going to the son of a...
Sure, yeah.
I'm surprised it didn't house date it, though, it's like...
It needs to be initials for sure.
No.
You spoke too soon.
Yeah.
Today is the 9th, Thursday, 17th, or 18th?
Nineteen.
Oh, it's right here, 19th. Sorry, on here. Nine, 1919, hey. It's, uh, this month has been that way.
Seems like, uh, isn't it?
Paladium, or whatever.
Like to start back at the beginning, what are you going to... Dean, you're not gonna come in with more copies aside?
Nope.
Okay, thanks.
Nope, I brought paperwork to inform Dave.
All right. Back to some non-public, gentlemen. All right, we have, uh, we're part of the Community Action Program. This is, we have a renewal of our donation, and we previously have given $2350, $2,350 to the Community Action Program, and, uh...
I was good with that amount.
Well, I was too, but the thing is, out of that, the citizens of Dunbar have got $35,000 of services. If you really look at that, it's a, it's a, I wanna continue this program because the citizens benefit from it. It basically goes to, uh, fuel assistance, fifty people had fuel assistance, electoral assistance, nineteen, weatherization programs, two people in one household. So, altogether, it's like $35,000 back to the citizens of Dunbar. They have to apply for it to show qualification, so it's not a freebie. Everyone is qualified, but I think that's a, it's a good investment in a, a lesson. And so, I, we have consensus on this, we have? Do you need that? So, continue the same amount, they, we were anticipating an increase for that, but they kept it the same. I'm happy with that.
What was the...
It was called the...
Twenty-three fifty, $2,000.
Um, we have some, uh, uh, feedback from the transfer station. Woody, I, I commended Woody for some of his, um, emails, but he can't be here. I think some of his emails are good, uh, they provided, tell us what's going on. We got some pictures I wanna share with you of the, uh, where they upgraded the bathroom.
Yeah, it was very good.
And they worked on it. Remember how he was, uh, he was concerned about the, uh, the, uh...
He thought he had to replace it because it wasn't working well.
The general was painted, machined it down, or not machined it down, but sanded it down with a grinder and things. It's supposed to be working better. Go ahead. The second thing is, Dave, would you just look to that, that old hazard day coming up?
Yeah, Household Hazardous Waste Day is October 19th, 8:30 to 1:00 in Bali. And they're looking for six volunteers to sign up for that. You can touch base with Woody at the transfer station.
Could you put that on topics? Oh, yeah. Bob, that's to you. Again, the only thing I'm concerned with, um, the new truck is, he's outfitting the new truck. Okay, he's outfitting the new truck, but the old truck, he has to inspect it. I just hope the expenses to maintain is not, uh, over some, too much.
It doesn't cost more than we're gonna get, hopefully.
That's, that's what I'm worried about. I, I don't wanna spend, throw money on a sinking ship.
Yeah, if it is significant, hopefully he gives us a heads up.
Yeah, could you, I just, just, that's our concern, Lee, that's our concern with it. But overall, I think it's transfer station, uh, it looks great, it's clean as usual. And, uh, the joke is, we have invisible solar panels, they're so nice you can't even see them. And I'm only joking, it's, uh, it's work in progress. Mr. Dan LaVoy is, uh, is representing, I found, he's, he's working with the company. So, uh, all, all activities are going through Dan, one representative from the town, so I'll leave at that. But it's, uh, it's, I'm just surprised, because every time I see the sun, I see, oh, the meter could be going backwards. But I check. Okay, we got a thank you note from, uh, remember that, uh, Chief Scott, Dad's passed away? We got a thank you note from the family. And, uh, if you wanna see what, what was provided, this is what they provided, uh, from the town, town board and town offices.
Saw that.
Show that, Dave, if you wanna see that. Show that, Dave, if you want to see that. So what was nice is we had, we didn't have to come to a meeting, thank you gentlemen for, was we had it pre-approved in our policy manual. It was just a matter of making it happen. And it was, we sent it in a timely manner, it was, I thought it was not a nice touch that we can do that, so.
Yeah, I think they were very appreciative from what I've seen too.
Yep. This goes to. I have to read this, we have a, this is the signed ordinance, remember the, we have an application for a permit for the signed ordinance for the first congressional church, they want to put a small sign.
It's actually replacing an existing sign.
Exactly, and the thing is, we sent it out for a legal review at the Hampshire Municipal Association. And I'm still trying to figure out the GAVI group here. And so it's gonna take me.
Now, why did we have to send it out, is it larger than our ordinance allows?
No.
So why would you send it out for legal?
The way the ordinance reads is supposed to be renewal, renewable on an annual basis. But I don't believe it should come before the selectmen if it's not changing in size.
Right.
It should just get renewed at.
At the building department.
Yeah.
I think that's, send this all back to them, I don't think we need to see this.
That's what I was thinking.
There's not an issue at hand, I don't think.
Well, in the legal review of our signed ordinance, again, he talked about it being okay with the exception of, you can't cross the line when it comes to political signs and temporary signs he talked about, but.
Correct, so there were, we have a couple of ordinance, a temporary sign ordinance and a sign ordinance. So the.
Oh, we just use the municipal association.
Right.
And what he emphasized.
Thought we sent it to our attorneys, I'm like, who's making sense?
Well, we use the municipal association, we can say it's a dollars.
Yes. He basically explained it that if you have this, the temporary sign ordinance can't differentiate between one kind of sign and another. And they have to be consistent.
Yeah, I don't even think we need to see that because they're renewal for everything.
So go ahead and tell them if it's within the same size of the current one.
Same general size, I mean, if it's a half, within an inch or so, I'm not gonna go over the table.
And they also, yeah, it's not a neon thing of any kind. And they also are located on Stark Highway, which is the state, so they did check with the state originally. They have no issues with that, so it's just following our policy for sign. Pass it on to her.
Okay, we have a step increase for one for Jason Patton, we have to sign this, all three of us.
Yep.
It's routine, nothing special. It's, that was the, if you, that's, this place in this personal manual.
What?
This is, so every time he gets a step increase, it's on the box.
It saves on paper in the personal file, it's required by the Department of Labor.
All our police officers are doing well, as far as passing all the tests and qualifications. And also, Chief reported back to me that everyone passed, we needed to pass. It was a recalcitration. Okay, public notice hearing, we have a postcard of Health Trust. They have some, two public hearings on rate setting and surface returns without trust coverage lines. We can send someone, but the thing is, I, they, we're not gonna have influence, so we can't ask them to lower rates and stuff.
No, but that's more of a public hearing, do you want to post that so our employees know they could go to it?
I don't think they have any say in the matter, I think this is just from the, isn't that the?
I went there one year, you really can't do anything but.
Right, you're just hearing what they have to say.
Sometimes you'll hear that they haven't been able to set the rate. When I went, they couldn't set the rate at that time, so. They were within a week or two.
Well, let's let Bob go again.
You want to go again, Bob?
No, it's okay.
They are, they are talking about there, it's gonna be present, a special presentation of a new benefit they call Grand Rounds, available through Health Trust. It's a medical advocacy program that helps cover individuals with complex and serious medical conditions to obtain accurate diagnosis, set optimal treatment path and unnecessary, and avoid unnecessary medical services.
So what I'm thinking is, we should put that on Hot Topics and or post it out here? So if one of our employees sees it.
But when they know here, that's a question we can ask.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, what's the date on that?
So if we can post that, at least.
Is that the twenty-eighth?
Twenty?
Six, twenty-sixth.
It's a Thursday, okay.
Just in case somebody wants to go and review it, probably nobody will, but we can't say that we didn't post it that way.
I agree with that.
On our bulletin board and on the Hot Topics.
Okay, this one, I want to share that cemetery trustees are moving out and making things happen. And this is just an update of what they're doing, and I just want to say kudos to the cemetery trustees. They are just doing great work in moving issues forward. And so I think what's, I commend them because they're all relatively new. And so the new people are just picking up the ball and running with it. It just gives us a summary of some of the projects they're doing. And if you open, there's some pictures back there, they actually have some pictures of what they're doing.
Looks like they're getting some bids in and they're working.
Yep. And the thing is, I think what was nice last year, they amended their budget. So they did some lashes budget, which was destined to be turned in to the general fund. But they actually learned how to commit it so it would be carried forward to next year in the.
It's gonna make a difference, they have some money to play with now.
To work with, yeah. I don't like the word play with, it's a tough word.
Work with.
Work with, there they go. This is my personal pet peeve, you sent it like three times, I don't think the public would appreciate that we played with their money.
Covered the money so they could accomplish something.
Oh, you want to sign that one? They are working on the signs as well, just so the public know, yeah. Dave, this was an older email, but I think you should read that, I think is, I talked, and I talked, you saw, I talked to the transfer station manager. And the thing is, it's probably the opposite of that, so which is great. Okay, this is, talk about it, okay? All right, that was the inbox, two weeks' worth. Not bad. I'm gonna open it to public.
Okay, you spoke about the lawn maintenance contractor hitting the pin.
Yes.
While I was up north, I saw a contractor taking down a tent. And they use those noodles, they cut those noodles and slide those on before they drive the pin in, the anchor pin in. They're very visible.
You know, I heard someone talk about that last week.
Yeah.
I wonder if that could be.
I did that, and it worked great.
You know.
That's a great idea, one noodle and or.
Well, you take, cut a piece.
Yeah.
Slide the pin to, drive it in the ground. I used purple because it was my son's wedding, but they use bright orange, you can't miss it. Somebody bumps their leg in it, it doesn't hurt.
Where do you get the noodles off season?
Uh, Amazon.
Amazon, there you go.
Oh, there you go, yeah, but August I think, I don't think it would be a problem.
Yeah, right, yeah.
No, I think that's.
And you just need to cut a piece off and slide it on.
Just to make it visible.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
That's a, I'll make, I'll let him know.
Yeah, after I heard about that last week, I was like, you know, that's a real, now it's even better idea than I thought.
Two, actually, the first one, he ran over and he literally bent it and it took a chunk out of his blade. The next one, he was passing, he looked down and he happened to see it, so he pulled it up. These have stakes, this one.
Yeah, they're big stakes, yeah.
And that first one got bent like four inches, this one, it's like, wow.
Yeah. Lucky he didn't break off the shaft.
Well, that's what he was hoping, because that's an expensive part.
Yeah, and somebody could get hurt besides.
And the committee's trying to do the right thing, make them pull again, which is, I think is great.
They're gonna reimburse him for that.
Correct.
All right.
Good suggestion, and even I, I'm taking that home, and I think it's a great idea when you put any stakes in.
I also saw another, something that they could have at Old Home Day is, they have this big cage where they rent, and it's ax throwing.
Okay.
It sounds like.
What's the target?
I saw that and I thought, wow, that'd be really weird to see at that Old Home Day, you know?
I was thinking, put that right next to the beer tent.
Instead of the, instead of dunking the selectmen, you know, you have one of those ax throwing.
There you go, we can miss them. I mean, all of the bigger targets.
Discount tickets, that's all. Thank you, Leo, anything else?
No.
Okay, great. I'll bring it to Dave.
I don't have anything this week other than, we are off our summer schedule.
Next week is the last week.
Yep.
Of our summer schedule.
Yep.
Then we go back to the regular four.
So we have, next week there's no meeting?
Correct.
I just, I know last year we came back into it and our agenda still didn't get that busy. Do we want to go one more month or do we want to leave it like it is?
Don't you usually get busy around October?
We'll be setting.
We didn't last year, that's why I was bringing it up.
We will be setting the tax rate probably within the first two weeks of October. I'll be needing the board to discuss that.
If you miss us, you can say that too.
All right, anything else, Dave?
No.
Okay, anything worth mentioning?
I haven't, but I want to do my agenda this week and try and get all of them.
Excellent. But what I want to do is commit the dollars, to any repair we have to do there.
You might do too.
Yeah. Well, you.
Nothing.
Okay.
Hi, Vipitha.
Yes, you're up.
Thank you. In your, that mailbox, there was another follow-up email from Attorney Bolt looking for someone to represent the town at the mediation scheduled for the twentieth and twenty-ninth. I am willing to do that if I'm allowed to take a couple days off during the week.
Oh, it's on weekend.
Yeah, he's really adamant, he says we really could use the town of Dunbar in there.
This is concerning the pending lawsuit and the settlements that it proposed.
I don't have any problem with that, Lee, would you have to take them both off one week or could you do one week?
Yeah, because it falls on a Saturday, Sunday.
Yep.
One would be one week and the other one would be the following week, it wouldn't be the same week.
I'm fine with that, um.
Consensus, do you have it?
Okay, I'll let him know about it.
Anything else?
Yep, one more thing, Halloween is on October thirty-first, which is a Thursday this year. In the past, when it's fallen on a Thursday, the town clerk does not like to be open because, for a number of reasons. You have traffic, kids, a lot of masked people up there. It just, it interferes with people coming in to do business. So she advertises for that specific day that she's open day hours, so she will be open seven-thirty to three-thirty. Tax collector said if there's nobody in the building from the four-thirty to seven, she will not open. And it all depends if the town, the select board want to hold a meeting the thirty-first of October during Halloween. I mean, they'll be out there for.
Wait for get customs on.
Thirty-first is on a Friday, though.
Thursday.
Is it?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I looked, yeah, October thirty-first is a Thursday. And their trick or treat goes till eight o'clock.
And if we do every other week on that, it'd be perfect.
No, I, you know, I think we might as well go back to weekly October.
Yeah, what about the.
Right, if she's talking about we're not having one on the thirty-first.
On the thirty-first as an exception.
Yeah, as an exception.
I think that's fine.
Really?
Well, you're gonna have people trick or treating around here and we're gonna be holding our meeting.
Exactly. You might be able to get some candy, I know how you're always looking.
Okay, consensus?
I think it's fine not to commit that.
The thing is, I'll put it this way, if there's something hot that needs to be signed or pushed off, please, we've got to communicate that to the board. And even if we can have a short meeting if we have to, or earlier in the day. Is that permissible?
Yeah, but we're gonna post.
We have to post it.
Don't, I'll hold a meeting, okay, all right.
All right, anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, just, I have one thing, the town clerk had her, like, one of her education meetings. And she basically found some, she had found some interest in software that would be for all the municipal offices. From all available to contact something in communication with the state. And I realized that there are a variety of vendors out there, what they are, are their interfaces, which basically make it easier for our employees to work. And they all interface with the state, there's numerous of them. Lynn has been working on this for a while, what we have works generally across the way. She did pick up some packets first, I gave you some free pens that you can take home with you. But the thing is, all it is, is a company looking for a business, she made some copies, you can pick some copies if we're interested. I would distribute it to some of the key stakeholders and let them look at it, Lynn, I don't think we're in a.
So earlier today, I asked Lynn if she was gonna be attending the meeting, because sometimes she has business for the town. And she said, no, that she had handed you guys that pamphlet. And we discussed it somewhat, I have not seen what she has there, but just for the board's information, I have reached out to Avatar and another company that are certified by the Department of Revenue to work in governmental agencies and provide us the modules and software that we need. I asked Linda if she was looking at this for her own benefit, she said absolutely not, she said she's happy with what she has. And she just thought with the budget coming up that it might be something we look at. But for your information, these are not usually inexpensive. I will do my research, because again, I've already been looking into it. But we're probably looking at anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to get set up and trained with the different.
All over, huh?
I'd rather give it to someone, I'd rather give it to some of the key stakeholders who use the software.
I think I need to do my research first and if I can't, if I can't adapt to what I see that would be helpful to the town offices, I don't think that they would pick up on it as well. And I think it should be a group thing that everyone gives their input. We all have, we have accounts payable, we have payroll, fortunately, our payroll's in-house. I'm sure you guys have read that there was a little bit of fraud going on out there with the outsourcing payroll companies. So we are. For the most, I will do my diligence and just research it, but.
As of going forward, this is, this is one company, but if you guys look at different ones and then you can realize if it's worth the investment or not, because you'll know what the dollars are somewhat, you know?
But there's an old.
But I don't think it's something we should jump into.
Totally agree, I think we should ask the question, is what we have working?
Correct, and we have our ups and downs with the software that we currently have. If I research it and I find that it's affordable, I may approach the board and say.
Probably there were positives and negatives on everybody's software.
I'm sure there are.
I know my company just changed our entire software, spent huge money doing it.
Yeah.
And I haven't seen the benefits from it yet, so.
And same with the state, the state just went through this with the portals that we're now using.
There's supposedly a lot more stuff we can draw from our information, but nobody knows how to draw it out, so. All it does is take more time entering.
I will look into it, if I have information to bring back to the board, I will let you know.
Yeah, I would say it's, please don't make that a front burner item.
Only because I think scale-wise, when we compare our community to other communities out there, scale-wise, I don't think we're as, well, to that company, you're important, but for us, that may not be as important to us as other investments.
Yeah, and we do have to go through the whole training process with everyone that's involved with it, so it's, it's pretty detailed. This last week, Allison was on vacation, so Joe Marie covered the payroll and accounts payment, she did a great job. But we had to enter into a new portal at Citizens Bank, and it was very trying. Even the treasurer was calling up saying, hey, I need this, and I can't find it. So it just, it gets a little nerve-wracking. And get over it, but it just, when it's new, it's a lot of learning.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, we have a non-public session, I want to talk about the pending litigation with the town's going into. And with that, I'm gonna ask Leo, if you'd be so kind to terminate our recording.